Ms. Callie?
Here.
Mr. De Prima. Mr. Dunn. Ms. Ellis-Foster. Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mr. Solakowski.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Quorum exists.
Okay, and can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for our nation, and to God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mara?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carroll. The top three vote-getters at the November election were as follows: Ms. Lisa Lent, 6,038 votes; Mr. Leonardo Marchetta, 5,746 votes; and Mr. J.D. Slade, 5,741 votes. So I will now move over to the podium, and I will invite each candidate up in the order of the number of the top vote-getter and swear them in to the Board of Education.
Mr. Mara, I'll have to take pictures because our public relations person is not available.
Just fill in your name?
Just fill in my name?
Yes.
I, Lisa Lent, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States in this state under authority of the people, so help me, God. I, Lisa Lent, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me, God.
Congratulations and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Marchetta?
I, Leonardo Marchetta, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me, God. I, Leonardo Marchetta, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me, God.
Congratulations and welcome to the board. Mr. Slade?
I, J. Slade, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me, God. I, J. Slade, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to law or disqualified from membership due to conviction of any crime or offense as listed by law, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best ability, so help me, God.
Congratulations and welcome. Roll call, Ms. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Callie.
Here.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Lent.
Present.
Mr. Marchetta.
Present.
Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Marchetta or is it Mr. Marchetta?
It's Mr. Marchetta.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Weber.
Yes, I'm here.
Quorum exists. Okay, at this point, I will open the meeting up to comments to any member of the public to approach the podium and express your thoughts about anything that's happening here tonight. Please state your name for the record.
There it goes. Okay, Kevin Borceli. So I want to start by congratulating the newest members of the board. Great job running in the election. I wish you guys all of the best. Just my only words of advice is to remember the reason why you're here, right? First and foremost, you're here for the students, you're here for the staff, you're here for the taxpayers. You're here to ensure that the district is a well-run district. You're not here to run the district. Many board members will tend to try to control the district or run the district. Your job is simply to make sure that it's well-run. And more importantly, tonight you took an oath, and that oath states that you will support the Constitution of the United States as well as the Constitution of this state. Keep that in mind when you're making your voting decisions, okay? Think about the rights of the citizens, the rights of the students, the rights of the staff, okay? And make your decisions based off of that. When we talk about you ensuring that the district is well-run, don't be afraid to challenge the administration. People will give you a lot of criticism for challenging the administration, but that doesn't mean that you think any less of the administration. You're simply doing your job by questioning the administration, okay? You have to make sure that every decision that they're making is a well-thought-out decision, the best decision for this district, the best decision for our students and our staff and our taxpayers. With that, best of luck to all of you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we will move on to the next section of the At this part of the meeting, I will take nominations for the presidents of the board, but prior to doing that, I just wanted to read to the public what the rules are that guide how this process is conducted. And it is as follows: The Board of Education is under policy and by law 0152. The Board of Education shall organize by electing one of its members as the president and another as a vice president. The election shall take place at the annual reorganization meeting pursuant to NJSA 18A colon 15 dash 1. This is that meeting, the reorganization meeting. The procedures for the election of board members shall be as follows: For the board president: One, at the annual reorganization meeting, the board secretary serving as the interim chair shall call for nominations for board president. Two, any member may place a member's name in nomination. Three, a second is not required for the nomination of a candidate for president. Four, a member who has been nominated may decline the nomination. Five, the board secretary and the board attorney shall record the names of all nominees for board president. Six, when board members have been given an opportunity to make nominations for board president, the board secretary shall close the nominations. Seven, the board secretary shall then conduct a roll call vote on nominees in the order in which they were nominated. Nominees who have declined nomination shall not be included in the roll call. Eight, a board member may only vote, I'm sorry, a board member may only vote in support of one candidate. Nine, the first candidate to receive votes from a single, simple majority of the board members present will be elected to the office, and the board president election process shall conclude with no further roll calls. Ten, in the event of a tie between two or more nominees, a second runoff election shall be conducted between the candidates receiving the highest number of votes. And number 11, in the event of such a tie, the board secretary shall conduct the runoff election via roll call in which each board member may only favor, may only vote in favor of one of the remaining candidates. And the election of the vice president will be conducted by the president, and it's a similar process. So with that, with those comments, I'd like to take a nomination for the board president.
I nominate Frank Weber for board president.
I nominate Teresa Burns.
Are there any other nominations for the president? Thank you. So the first vote will be for Mr. Frank Weber as board president. Ms. Teresa Burns?
No.
Jill Callie?
No.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marchetta?
A very resounding yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Weber is the new president of the Board of Education.
Thank you. I'm very appreciative, and pray for me.
So if you heard Mr. Mara, at this point, without further ado, I will open the nominations for vice president.
I nominate Lisa Lent.
And I nominate Sal Giordano.
No other nominations or closed nominations?
That's it, only two.
And this for a roll call.
For Ms. Lisa Lent, Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marchetta?
No.
Mr. Slade?
No.
Mr. Solakowski?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Lent is the new vice president of the board.
Items one, two, and three, is there any discussion from the board? Hearing no discussion?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve items one, two, three on the finance. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Because you didn't say we were moving on to finance, I kind of got lost there for a second. I do have some discussion. I know that there's been a lot of back and forth and confusion on my position on, you know, because of Amboy Bank in the past, and we never could come to a conclusion whether or not, because my daughter works there, whether I was conflicted, but she no longer works there, so it's not a problem.
Correct.
Right. I'll move it. Is there a second?
Giordano, second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marchetta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three, pit.
We'll move on to item romanorial numeral four, supplies, equipment, and services. I'll accept a motion to move items one, two, and one and two. Is there a motion?
Burns will make the motion.
Is there a second?
Giordano, second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll-call.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and --
All right, we're tied on fire, correct?
Section 1 and 2 on Board Secretary and Board Business.
Okay. We're now moving to Roman numeral four?
Number nine.
Nine?
I'm sorry, number 14.
Number 14, which is Board Secretary and Board Business. Is there a motion to throw down? I'll move it. I'll ask for a second.
Lent will second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Weber, it's my obligation to read the Code of Ethics to the board members at a specific board meeting each year. And then after the reading of the Code of Ethics that each board member must comply with, they are free to ask the board attorney any questions about any of the provisions in the Code of Ethics.
Okay.
So move the, number one, move the board acknowledge the receipt of the Code of Ethics by each school board member and the reading thereof by the school business administrator and subsequent discussion thereof. In accordance with NJSA 18A:12-24.1, every board member will abide by the following Code of Ethics. The board member will, number one, uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Number three, confine his or her board action to the policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Number four, carry out his or her responsibility not to administer the schools but, together with fellow board members, ensure that they run well. Five, recognize that the authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. Six, refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seven, hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. And in all matters, he/she will provide accurate information and, in concert with fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Number eight, vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief school administrative officer. Number nine, support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And number 10, refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So contained in each packet is a certification that each board member must sign and return to me at the end of the meeting, confirming that we have had this discussion tonight. Now, do any board members have any questions for Mr. Parton in reference to the Code of Ethics?
I have a question. My sheet is A, court orders, laws, rules, regulations. Does that also include executive orders?
Yes. Executive orders, which we seem to talk about a lot lately, do have the force of law under the statutes of the state of New Jersey. So at this point, we have executive orders that are operating as law.
So that would include the proper wearing of a mask?
It would include Executive Order 251.
Is there a motion to approve Board Secretary and Board Business? Items one and two?
We have a motion, second. We just need a roll-call.
Second. All right, discussion? All right. Hearing none, I just do want to comment on the Code of Ethics. This is universal across the state of New Jersey, it's state law, it's not unique to Oldbridge.
That is correct.
And this is also a guideline for parents. Because if you know this and you have it in front of you, anytime you think that it's been broken, then you file a complaint. Correct?
Everyone has the right to file a complaint if they believe the ethics laws have been broken.
Okay. And a couple of things that are very important. It says, the Board of Education, one of their primary responsibilities is policy and planning. This year, well, I'll go on after that. Roll-call.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Calley?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Lent?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
I will open the floor for a hearing of residents on any school item.
Okay, how you doing? Keith McIsaac. You want to talk about 251, Executive Order 251. Recently, my daughter has been forced to wear her mask playing basketball in gym, where the executive order clearly states that any, what is it? Any physical activity, any aerobic activity, which was stated by Mr. Sittadino in his return email to me, that every day she comes home, I got to hear about a new issue with this certain gym teacher. And I really don't care for it. You know why? Because that's affecting my daughter. Who knows what's going to happen in a couple of years when all these kids have lung issues? Who am I going to come after? Not Murphy, because he's hiding somewhere, you know? It all rolls downhill. There's a, Mr. Sittadino is always stating how he has to follow all the guidelines from the executive order and the governor, where a lot of them are recommendations, you know? And if you're being really stringent with kids wearing masks when they really shouldn't be, because it says right in black and white in 251, you know, when are we really going to follow what it truly says and not what you want to do? You know? Or what's good for the teacher? Because the teacher's barking out all these orders about wearing masks when they're doing these things, they got to peddle these things on the floor. That's pretty physical, that's pretty aerobic. You know, so I'm a little tired of that. You know, you could talk about 251 all you want and the proper wearing of the mask. But, you know, the vaccines, you get the vaccine, you still catch it. You got the vaccine, you still spread it. They just said the masks, these cloth masks, don't work. So, you know, there has to be something that is going to benefit the kids finally and not all this political BS.
Is there anyone else who cares to speak?
Hi, my name is Dana Marqueta. I'm Lenny's wife. I just want to say on the whole mask thing that my child was in gym and her gym teacher, same teacher, decided to staple her mask. So you want to talk about effective mask-wearing? She took a staple, held it on her face, a gun, and stapled it twice. And you know what she told my daughter after my daughter asked for a new mask? "No, I'll just staple it because I've stapled your brother's numerous times." So you want to talk about sanitary? That is disgusting. You want to talk about effective mask-wearing? She's a 10-year-old child. Her mask was stapled on her face with the staple going in, that her homeroom teacher said, "How is that normal?" So if the child asks to wear a mask, she didn't want to, but she did to comply with the order, the teacher should let her go get a new mask, not staple it to my child's face.
Richard Dunn. I just want to congratulate Lisa Lent, Leo Machado, and Jay Slade for becoming new board members. I know what's in their hearts speaking to them. I know that they have what's in the best interest of our children at heart. And that's one thing I want just to remind everyone, it's about the children. And we may have different opinions on how to get places, but ultimately, it's about the children. You know, it's one thing that we can say, "Well, it's about teachers, it's about, you know, the school system." Ultimately, we all serve for the children, and we have to find the best solution that caters to them. So with that said, I want to congratulate to Frank Weber for becoming president. I know Frank, for the last 15 years, the board's going to be in good hands with his stewardship. Lisa Lent, congratulations for becoming vice president. I know that you spent three years up here and doing the work with the children. And I'm confident that the nine members up here are going to do the right thing for this district. And quite frankly, we all have to unify because we all have to work together. Because Oldbridge is a better place when we're all working together and not against each other. So I'm going to tell the board that I'm at their disposal. If they need anything with my assistance, I'll be there to assist in any which way that's necessary. But the fact is, is that I know what's in these people's heart, and it's about the kids, and that's the way we should keep it. So thank you and congratulations again.
Good evening. Andrew Lewis, President of the OBEA. Welcome Mr. Slade and Mr. Marqueta to the board. And welcome back, Mrs. Lent. I look forward to working with each of you over the next three years, in addition to all of our returning board members. Congratulations to Mr. Weber on your appointment as board president. I'd like to take an opportunity this evening to explain the role of the association in our community for our new members, as well as any residents here tonight reviewing the meeting online. The Oldbridge Education has over 1,000 employees of the district represented. We play a role here in the district, in the community, and in the lives of our students and their families. Many of our members live in Oldbridge, and so they're not only employees but also taxpayers and, in many cases, parents or grandparents of students enrolled in our schools. Our members are the backbone of this district. They get our students to and from school, educate and work with them throughout the day, keep our schools operable, technology functioning, and everything else that happens in and out of the offices across the district that keep our schools running. In the community, through our Public Relations Grants, the Oldbridge Education Association has provided money to PTAs to assist with various events, including this year's Tent or Treat, co-host of a SEPTA, Southwoods Gingerbread House Night, and the upcoming Pizza Night at Voorhees. Over the past few years, we've installed five little free libraries around town and worked with SEPTA to have communication boards funded and installed in the district among our many projects. You see our members not only give of their time during the school day, but all the time. I have served as the president of the association for the last six months and have worked tirelessly with, during this time, to build relationships with our administrators and to maintain and build upon the success of our district for the betterment of our students and educators. Since my term as president began, the association and administration have worked together to amicably solve multiple grievances, help fill hard-to-fill jobs, and protect the health and safety of our community. As an association, we want what is best for our students, and we're happy to build relationships and work alongside anyone who wants to work with us. That is our invitation to you tonight, the Board of Education and to the entire community. Let's work together to make positive changes for our schools, changes that we are empowered and tasked with making. There are many obstacles confronting public education right now. Many of them are out of my hands, out of your hands, and out of the hands of our administrators. Let's work collaboratively and bring forth positive improvements for our students, staff, and community. Let's focus on things like expanding preschool, improving our school facilities, building more STEM labs in our schools, expanding our arts, music, and athletic programs. There's a lot that we can do together, so let's do it. And as goodbye message, last month to the board, Mr. Dunn expressed that his proudest accomplishment on the board was the establishment of full-day kindergarten. As an elected member of our Board of Education, find something that you are passionate about, something that you can do that would make a difference for our students, staff, and community. I challenge you to leave this board, our schools, and community a better place than you find them tonight. That's my goal as president of the association, and I hope that is your goal as a Board of Education member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else care to speak? If not, I will close the --
Well, Mr. Weber, there was an email that I received --
Oh, I'm sorry.
-- that the board secretary emailed today. It is from Bijal Patel. Hello, I was told to send a comment so it can be read at the BOE meeting tonight. It was very concerning as a parent that the Oldbridge schools have not provided a remote learning option after returning from winter break. Several districts in Middlesex County and other nearby counties have gone remote for one to two weeks. Number one, if health and safety is a concern for our children of Oldbridge, why is this not a temporary option? Number two, what are the options for parents that want to keep their children home until the cases come down, aside from homeschooling? Three, are absences due to COVID considered unexcused? And four, can you clarify the updated policy that was sent via email this week? Colon, if a vaccinated child tests positive and is asymptomatic, then are they allowed to come back to school? Thank you.
Is it on? Okay, I want to comment regarding the board and the lawyer. What are you guys going to do, or the board is going to do, to the teacher who stapled my granddaughter's face? What, are you going to plan to do something? Send him a letter that if he doesn't cease and desist, you'll get fired? What is the procedure? They're not supposed to do that to my granddaughter or any child. You guys are supposed to be, make sure the teachers teach the right thing and behave like human beings. That's not behaving like a human being. A dog gets treated better than that. So any response from the lawyer?
Yes. Mr. Weber has asked me to respond, and what we heard tonight?
I know it's only an allegation.
Excuse me?
I understand it's only an allegation.
Yes, but that's what I was going to say. What we heard tonight is horrible. I'm sure administration at the building and central level look into it. We can't publicly tell you what we would do as far as discipline to any member of the staff, but I assure you that that will not be ignored.
Well, I hope so because it's not going to be the end of it. Thank you.
Mr. Parton, if I'll weigh in. The first speaker who spoke on that topic, I think we just exchanged emails, correct? You asked me that question. I also had, I also had an email from the principal, not directed at your question but as a general question in Executive Order 251 as it pertains to physical education. And I've had comments with, and conversations with other members of the public, and the statement is the same. If you support Executive Order 251, you can't support the parts you like and not the parts you don't like. The information in there is clear. If the students are in a situation where they're exhibiting aerobic behavior, physical activity, and they're safely spaced, you can take them off. And that's for inside. Outside, they can take their masks off for any physical activity. And when that was addressed, I also addressed that with the principal. So if that's still an ongoing concern, on Monday, I'll re-review it. Mr. -- or Ms. Marqueta? How do you pronounce it? Is it Marcheta or Marqueta?
Marqueta.
Marqueta, okay. So Ms. Marqueta, first I like, first time I'm hearing this, of this situation, we've supplied all the schools with ample disposable masks. Every student has a mask similar to the one that your child's grandfather's wearing. And if that's not available, we have more of those as well. So we'll address the matter as you brought to our attention with the incident that took place and make sure everyone knows, at least for a fact, that we have plenty of masks within the schools, and there's no need. And that's why they're disposable, because if they break, you can put a new one on, you don't staple them.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I promise you, that'll be reviewed on Monday. Mr. Lewis is here, he heard about it, I'm sure he'll be part of council with the, the staff member, and we'll move forward. Thank you. Maybe not when the Knicks play, but when the Nets play, it's more of a rollback.
I believe that everybody who's subject to 251 and the nuances of it, they have to obey all of them, which means, and I know, I've read 251, so I'm very familiar with the part of it you're speaking about. Anybody who's got breathing issues or certain sports, it's not, it's not an administrative decision to prevent them from, you know, not wearing a mask. That has to be obeyed, and we have to obey it as well. That's why we're wearing our masks. So it should be, it should be a normal condition, and we'll leave it to administration to make the corrections that will solve that problem. Right, seeing no other discussion? Roll call? We're closing the hearing to the public. All right, just got old business. All right, board members, any old business, anyone cares to discuss?
Yeah, I'll say a bunch of stuff. All right, so in addition to Executive Order 251 and 253, I'm pretty sure the state of emergency ends on January 11th unless it gets renewed by the legislator. And you can tell that the governor considers it a state of emergency when he travels to Costa Rica during the Christmas vacation. But in addition to that, more importantly, the decision for individual school districts to keep schools open is very important, or at least give the option to keep them open, or do like a half and half, people that want to go to school and the people that want the remote learning. Because at one of the meetings, at the November meeting, we got all the terrible things that have been happening to the students' mental health when it comes to the closing of schools. So I hope we could focus more on that. I mean, obviously, what happened to that student, I haven't heard of it, this is the first time I've heard of it. But I think my main focus is making sure that we give the option to students to attend school in person if, if they want to or not. Obviously, we have to deal with the staff, obviously, that's a problem. So we have to make sure that that's addressed, of course, as well. And next week, I'll be introducing the, the resolution to make sure that the quarantine requirements for the uninjected and the injected are the same, and that each student is treated equally. And that's it. Thank you all for coming, it was very energetic, so that's it, and see you soon if you come back.
Any other board members?
Yes, I would like to congratulate the new board members, and I'm looking forward to working with you for the next year or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say something. I would like to thank the three board members who served their time here on the board for as long as they did. I would like to say thank you to the supporters who got myself and Mr. Slade up here, representing the parents of Oldbridge. I would like to say that, like I've stated before, I'm ready to work with the current board and the administration to progress the township into a better place of learning. And just congratulations, Ms. Lent, Mr. Slade, and thank you. Congratulations, Frank and Lisa.
Now I have to say something. Yes, I'm excited to be here, I want to thank my supporters. I want to definitely thank my family, rookie. We walk streets, we handed out flyers, we did door hangers, we put our time in. My main objective is to be a voice for the people, for the parents. As a parent myself, I've got two girls in the system, I see their pains, I see their pleasures as well. So the teachers are doing a great job, the girls are progressing, but I need the township to know that we are here to listen, nothing's going to get ignored, and we're excited to be here. It was a long battle to get here, but we're glad that we're here, I'm glad that I'm here. And again, I want to congratulate Frank, Lisa Lent, Mr. Leonardo, for getting on the board. And thanks, guys, we're excited.
Any other board members? All right. I say congratulations to all three of our new board members. I welcome Lisa back, you know, I know, having worked with her for three years, she will be an asset to the board. And my expectations are equally as high for the two new candidates. Mr. March, Marqueta? Okay. Listen, I had three shots at it, so it was easier. And Mr. Jay. And I think going forward, I do want to bring up one thing, which I think is important and focused. We, like every other district in the state of New Jersey and districts all over the country, are straddled with this terrible pandemic. And certainly, we need to do the things, stay abreast of the sciences as parents, question the science, because obviously, you have, I'm going to say, 30 different camps and scientific data. But I think you need to continue to do that, so that no one, the administration or the board, gets too comfortable. I think we need to keep asking the questions. The other one, which goes back to the year 2018 and 19, was when the state of New Jersey cut substantial funding for almost a third of the districts in the state. We had started out with a $15 million penalty that they were going to take back over a seven-year period, and I think this amount, that's been reduced to about $12 million now. And to put that in perspective, when, when you get a tax bill and it goes up to 2% at the state, we can charge now, that's how much they're also taking away. So you're, in essence, you're going to be living for that seven-year period with really not gaining any income from the state. It's offset by what they're taking away. One of the things that happened in 1999, we had over 4,700 kids in our elementary schools. We have 3,100 now. Our population is getting older, there's less children, there's less houses being built in spite of all of what you hear in terms of Oldbridge. People are buying existing houses, and there is some building going on, but not a tremendous difference that'll make a big deal over demands on additional facilities. And before the referendum was approved in 2001, and we had added 26 classrooms to that to give us the things that we needed in the elementary schools, we had no problem accommodating the 4,700 kids. The classes were bigger than they are now, they ran in the middle twenties. Right now, they're about 20 at the elementary school. So one of the things that this board, in my opinion, has to be very focused on, we are still going to be getting a reduced state aid through the school year 24, 25, Joe, is that correct? So each year, we're losing money there. One of the reasons is, we have one of the lowest average-sized schools in Middlesex County, in spite of the fact that we're the third or fourth largest district in the county. So everybody's going to have to understand at some point, we're going to have to do things to save more money, or you're going to fall off the financial cliff in 24, 25. When you're living with state aid, that's going to be equivalent to what you were getting in 2010. And there's things we can do, and we can't waste a minute in not starting to make those reductions. Now, most of them should not be any painful reductions, but like anybody else, if one parent loses a job, you modify their lifestyle. We don't want to take any programs away, but we need to be very conscious of what we spend and how we do it. It's your money. Motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to go home. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you for coming tonight, and we hope to see you here more often.
Thank you, Oldbridge.